Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, September 8th, 2025 West Fargo City Commission meeting. We'd call the meeting to order. I'd ask that you please join the commission in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present.
Commissioner Zondell.
Here.
Commissioner Dartis.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Let the record show all commissioners are present. First order of business is to approve the order of the agenda. It has been distributed and in front of you.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Jorgensen moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zondell seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the order of agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of August 18th, 2025. Again, they have been distributed.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 18th, 2025, as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F is building permits. Again, it has been distributed and in your packet.
Moving approved.
Commissioner Zondell moves to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconded it. I have a motion and a second to approve the building permits as presented. Is there any discussion? Commissioner?
I need to recuse myself from voting on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Let the record show that was a 4-0 vote. Consent agenda. We have items A through E.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Anderson moves to approve the consent agenda, items A through E. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now move into the regular agenda. First order of business is public comment. At this present time, we had one person signed up for public comment. The gentleman, please come forward, use this microphone, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. David with date 24/21, cloud light east. Item nine tonight, to approve the city ordinance for street maintenance, makes no wonder if the city has ever had the authority to maintain streets. Four, this related to item 10 on the agenda, the lawsuit the city has faced since May regarding the North River Lake project on the west side. Why is the city being sued regarding a street project? Regardless of this litigation, West Fargo TAP continues to call out this project number 2290 as an ill-advised experiment that will likely cost more with low-quality results. It's apparent, as you've also been watching, that the city is failing to follow the project specifications in several areas. Not following the North Dakota DOT bridge and street construction requirements that the city demands private companies follow. Not following quality control requirements demanded by private companies, which ensured no mistakes are made regarding compaction, thickness, subsurface preparation, et cetera, using improper equipment, including contractors and haul trucks, failure to properly clean the streets after they were milled, and failure to complete the street overlay within the required three-day period following the milling work. Besides the above, Commissioner should also question staff about why was there so much effort, including a rebid, to obtain asphalt from Minnesota when the asphalt used is from Fargo? With so many city staff working on this project, what other work they should have been doing has been ignored. If the employees assigned to this project are to be a permanent construction crew, how will they be productive the rest of the year? Will staff now ask for more new expensive equipment for this type of work? Why do no other North Dakota cities undertake such large projects? And why are two of the largest contracting associations in North Dakota taking issue with West Fargo's practices? Common sense should tell you that using government staff for this work is not economically feasible. This does not save money to taxpayers. Thank you, Commissioner.
Again, we had one person sign up for public comment. We move on.
Public comment, Mr. Dartis.
You have to sign. You have to sign up before.
It doesn't say anything on this, on this notice of budget here. It's sent out via U.S. mail from your city of West Fargo. Had I known, could I have signed up? I would have.
Second two, that's what we're moving to now.
We're moving to that.
We're moving to that next.
Again, we are moving into item two for public hearings. The first public hearing is on 825-17, Cheyenne Second Edition, a request for zoning, rezoning from R2 to P. Aaron Nelson, the Director of Planning and Zoning, will be presenting. Good evening and welcome.
Good afternoon, President Dartis and Commissioners. So item two is an application to rezone the South Elementary School property from R2 to P. R2 is our multi-dwelling residential district and P is our public facilities district. The specific request to action tonight is to hold a public hearing and to approve the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. This request comes to you with a recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just to orient Commissioners and the public, the subject property that we're talking about here is located at 117 Sixth Avenue West, which is the site of South Elementary School, as well as the property immediately adjacent, or excuse me, across the street south of Seventh Avenue West, which includes the playground and ballfield facilities for the school. The purpose of the rezone is to accommodate the school district's planned remodel of South Elementary School. The current building is legally non-conforming with the R2 district standards, just due to the age of the building. And the P district allows for greater development flexibility specifically in regards to some of the required setbacks. The P district is also intended for use for public facilities such as public schools. It's the reason that the P district exists in the first place. To date, staff has received one phone call in support of the proposed zone change and no other comments. And overall, staff finds the request to be consistent with city plans and ordinances as outlined within the staff report. So again, the requested action tonight is to hold a public hearing and to approve the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Commissioners? All right, thank you. At this time, we gab a lot of the regular agenda. We now are in a public hearing with regard to 825-17, Cheyenne Second Edition, a request for rezoning from R2 to P, public facilities. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak against the rezoning of 825-17, Cheyenne Second Edition? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We're back in the regular agenda. Again, Commissioners, the task before us this evening, and this is the first reading, how would you like to proceed?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve 825-17, Cheyenne Second Edition, request for rezoning for R2 to P.
Second.
Is there a second? Commissioner Anderson seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Item 2B is a public hearing on the 2026 preliminary budget. Duskin Scott, City Administrator, will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioner President Dartis and Commissioners. So on August 4th, the Commission approved the preliminary budget. This is a hearing for objections or protests on the preliminary budget. The state requires us to hold this hearing between September 7th and October 7th. So I know, recognize that some time has passed since approving the preliminary budget, but that's what we're here to do tonight. So with that, I would turn it over to the Commission for any questions that I can answer.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you.
I'll leave it to you.
At this time, again, we gab a lot of the regular agenda. We go into public hearings. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the 2026 preliminary budget? The 2026 preliminary budget? Please come forward, use this microphone, please.
I'm just, one comment, I think it's been interesting to watch the city staff going through the same type of budget process that companies go through, where you can't just raise your prices to your customers without losing customers. Governments don't have that danger of losing customers. We're stuck here with our houses. And so then have this artificial ceiling facing them puts them under the same pressure that all the private industry in the area has to face all the time. I think it's probably been an excellent learning experience for them. And while we've seen, it seems like they put together a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 2026 preliminary budget? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the 2026 preliminary budget? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of it? Public hearing is closed. Is this an actionable item, Mr. Scott? I would assume.
Thank you, Commissioner President. No, this is not an actionable item. You're just to hold the hearing and receive any objections or protests on the preliminary budget.
All right. With that, we move on to item number three. Item number three is the review of the 2026 final budget. Mr. Scott?
Well, thank you again, Commissioner President Dartis and Commissioners. Well, it's my absolute pleasure to bring forward our first draft of the final budget. We are well ahead of schedule, so that gives us some time now to get this information out to the public. A couple of things to highlight. One, a little bit of a different format this year. We are putting all of the departmental itemized budgets in an appendix at the back end, keeping the, all the departmental narratives with total dollar amounts in the front end. So I hope the public appreciates this format. We think it is very user-friendly and excited that we are adding our priorities goals for 2026 and adding some context to the budgetary items. So this is uploaded on our website, it is available. As you would recall, we are planning to bring the final budget forward on September 22nd, where it's possible the Commission could approve it then. If not, if we're not ready, the October 6th meeting would be our last meeting before we need to approve it and return the final budget to the county to stay in accordance with state law. So I don't really have a lot of other information to share with you. I will say that since the preliminary budget was approved on August 4th, there have been no changes to the departmental expenses. Really, the only change that you would find in the numbers would be a reduction in our forestry revenue. It reduced from about $870,000 down to $800,000. So that's really the only monetary change since our preliminary budget approval.
What precipitated that change, Mr. Scott?
Just, I think after the utility rates were approved, there was an adjustment made to reflect those new rates. So more of a correction that took place. We have included all of our other special revenue funds in the final draft here, so there is new information that is in this draft final budget that was not available for the preliminary. But again, now we've got a couple of weeks before the 22nd, so we're excited to get your feedback and answer any questions that we can.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Again, this is just a review and inviting the public to look at this online and the like. Again, we're not taking any action on the budget this evening. That'll come forward at a later date. Have anything else for us?
Oh, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to item number four. Item number four is 825-19, Galvinizer's Edition, a request for a final plat approval. We're going to call on Aaron Nelson, our Director of Planning and Zoning for this topic. Welcome back.
Thank you. So item four is a request for final plat approval, including the associated public dedication agreement. This request comes to you with a recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So let's pull up the aerial photo here. The subject property includes about 12 acres of land located between 7th and 12th Avenues northeast, just west of the Fargo landfill. The city of Fargo currently owns the subject property along with an unplatted remainder of land immediately to the west and is in the process of subdividing several tracts of land for the purpose of selling the property off to other individuals and entities. The land is currently within the M Heavy Industrial Zoning District, and the proposed subdivision plat establishes one 12-acre lot, which they intend to sell to Galvinizer's Inc., which is the landowner immediately to the south of the subject property. Additionally, the subdivision also includes right-of-way dedication for the extension of 12th Street Northeast on the northwest portion of the plat here. However, there are no plans to construct any infrastructure within the right-of-way at this time. The subdivision includes public dedication in the form of fee in lieu of land dedication, as there is no need for parks or other public facilities within the subdivision. The details of that fee in lieu of land dedication are included in an agreement within the subdivision packet as well. So in closing, staff has received no comments regarding the proposed subdivision plat, and overall, staff finds the proposed plat to be consistent with city ordinances and the comprehensive plan and is recommending approval. Again, the requested action tonight is to approve the final plat of Galvinizer's Edition along with the associated public dedication agreement. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Questions, Mr. Nelson? Commissioner Olson?
So in the screen that you've got up there right now, that dotted line dissecting Block 1, is that a potential, yeah, right there, is that a potential road, street?
I believe that's actually an existing pipeline.
Oh, pipeline, okay.
Yep, that's already there.
All right. Thank you.
So does your department have any additional oversight if we approve this plotting of what the land use might be for the future?
So the property is currently within the M Heavy Industrial Zoning District, and so once the subdivision is approved, the owner would be allowed to, you know, construct or use property for anything that's currently allowed within the Heavy Industrial Zoning District.
Can you give me some examples? What's allowed in an Heavy Industrial?
So our M Heavy Industrial District is the most intensive of our zoning districts, and so the Heavy Industrial, so manufacturing, production, that sort of thing. Galvinizer's Inc., again, is the property owner to the south. They do galvanizing of metals, I believe, is what they specialize in, and so I believe that's the intended uses of the property is for expansion of their current facilities on Seventh Avenue.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I motion to approve.
Mr. Jorgensen moves to approve 825-19, the Galvinizer's Edition, a request for a final plat approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve 825-19, Galvinizer's Edition. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Item number five is a park service contract. We call on Sarah Gosavich, Director of Human Resources. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Today, I am here to present the Human Resources and Payroll Service Agreement between the city of West Fargo and the West Fargo Park District. This agreement is the result of a thoughtful collaboration, and at its core is about our community and fiscal responsibility. To do this, what it does is it allows the Park District to remain on our benefit program, shielding them from a steep increase in prices for benefits should they have to go and seek out their own plans. As we all know, ultimately, those costs, if they were to be incurred, would be passed along to the Park District employees, the families and the kids that participate in their activities, as well as to our taxpayers through their mill increases that would be needed in order to cover the cost of those benefits on their own. For the city, there would be efficiencies gained. This would allow us to reassign some of the excessive workload that the HR generalists are currently experiencing, allowing them to be freed up to, you know, provide that personal service that our employees deserve. It would also allow for them to focus on a higher level of strategic work as we go in trying to finish up some of these projects, such as our time and attendance and our Lexi Pole policy implementation. So in summary, the agreement delivers taxpayer savings, employees' stability and operational efficiency, and I respectfully ask for your approval on this agreement.
Thank you. Questions from the Commissioners? Okay.
I will obviously recuse myself from this vote.
Commissioner Zondell is recusing herself as a member of the Park District. Commissioners?
I move we approve.
Mr. Olson moves to approve the Park District Service Contract as presented. It's in your packet, it's online. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen seconds. I have a motion and a second to accept the Park District Service Contract as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We move on to item number seven. Item number seven is an improvement district, number 2265, 9th Street and 7th Avenue Northeast Reconstruction. Oh, did I, I, my apologies. I jumped one.
You want to get to that Vikings game.
I, my apologies to the. Item number six is to accept a bid withdrawal and award a contract to Manning Mechanical. We call on Mr. Matt Anvik, Director of Public Works. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner President Commissioners. Tonight, bringing you back Project 9061, the expansion of Phase 2, which is the Public Works and Sanitation Expansion. As we were doing the contracts, you know, from the one that was approved on August 4th at the Commission meeting, it was noticed by our mechanical contractor, Peterson Sheet Metal, that they had misinterpreted base bid E and the partial cost and had an error. And with that, they withdrew their bid. With that error, Manning Mechanical would be the lowest bidder at $2,345,000, which is $505,000 higher than what was previously approved. But had Peterson Sheet Metal not made that error, this would have been the low bid the entire time. Just a little awkward having to come back and ask for approval later. But with the budget and this new higher fee, the combined total for Phase 2 bids comes up to $9,855,518. It's still quite a bit lower than the Phase 2 construction estimate of $11,960,510. And then with the total revised Phase 2 costs with all the FF and E contingency fees, materials is $11,717,789, which is still quite a bit lower than the original estimate, was a little over $13 million. Since the last meeting, we have been approved for $8.5 million in loans from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and $2.7 million loan from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. So the total SRF loan funding that we were approved for is $11.2 million. The remaining will come out of the capital improvement sales tax and, you know, and/or the water reserve funds. There's been no changes in the approved rate schedule, and then future being we originally approved for about $8 million coming out of the CIP, now we're down to under $4. That'll leave more money in there for future infrastructure needs. So this brings us to total costs of the whole, the entire project, Phase 1 and 2. Now the total is $14,820,497. That is well below our original estimated total that we brought before you, originally at $15 million, about $15,900,000. So tonight, I ask you to approve the withdrawal of Peterson Sheet Metal's bids and award the mechanical contract of Phase 2 to Manning Mechanical in the amount of $2,345,000. I guess I said that right?
Mr. Anvik, thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yeah, I've been involved in a lot of bids, you know, million-dollar bids and stuff. I think YHR failed us. They didn't do a pre-bid award meeting to make sure that the bid met the specs. So I don't know if we need to set a policy that make a dollar amount and before they just award the bids, make sure that the company that is bidding it has dotted the i's and the t's. We wouldn't be in this position. I'm not blaming you, Matt, at all. I'm just saying we hired an engineer to do this for us, and they failed.
Yep, they didn't contact Peterson Sheet Metal actually twice and told them to review their bid and make sure they were good with it. They said they were good and came back, and it was until they got their contract. So they were just continually reading it wrong or.
Those pre-bid award meetings are very, very detailed. I mean, it takes several, I've sat in on them and they start to finish, every line item is concerned.
Yeah, it's definitely a lesson for the future to make sure that we have everything done, but yeah, it was, once we thought we had and asked them twice, we thought everything was good on their end.
Right, but that's me in a face-to-face meeting. If we could try to figure out a policy for that moving forward, just to make sure we're not in this position again, please.
Yep, understood.
I couldn't agree more with you, Commissioner. I've sat in on many of these myself in a previous life, and they are critically important, making sure that the end user is protected. And I am aware that we did contact this bidder twice, and they stated two different times specifically to us that their bid was right, until they actually received the contract and they had not put the numbers in the right places. So this is a really unfortunate situation to be in. Obviously, there's a bidder's bond. There has been some discussions about whether or not the city is entitled to that bidder's bond. And normally, when you go after a bidder's bond, you're going to spend as much legal fees as that 3% or 4% to get that, the bidder's bond back. So I want the public to be registered and the rest of the Commissioners here that this dialogue has taken place in detail as to what was best for the city. And the conclusion is the presentation this evening. So with that, Commissioners, it's an actionable item.
Moving approved.
Commissioner Zondell moves to accept the bid withdrawal and award the contract to Manning Mechanical for the expansion of Public Works. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven. See, I'm back on track now, Commissioner Olson. Improvement District number 2265, 9th Street and 7th Avenue Northeast Reconstruction. We're going to call on Dan Hanson, the Senior Director of Community Development for this presentation. The presentation is to approve both an engineer's report and plans and specifications and direct an ad for bids and approve resolution of necessity. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dartis and Commissioners. This is a project that's been in front of you a number of times. Basically, next summer, the intent is to reconstruct 9th Avenue, 9th Street Northeast from Main Avenue up to 12th Avenue, and also 7th Avenue Northeast from 9th Street Northeast east into Fargo. This is a project that will be bid out by the North Dakota DOT as with their funding. They would be the entity entering into the contract with the contractor. They would be the entity entering into the contract with the contractor. And so they would actually be the ones that would be doing the advertising for bids for the project, opening bids, and eventually we would come forth with a recommendation for the DOT to award those bids. So tonight, what we need to do is approve the plans and specifications that have been prepared through a consultant, so that way they can get that advertised and approve the ad for bids as well. And then also, as a resolution of necessity, as most of this project is surface improvements, meaning multi-use path, roadways, storm sewer features like that, so that will trigger us to send out letters to the improvement district that was previously created and create a situation where we will be back here on October 20th for a hearing of protest for that project. We were... All the financials have been updated in this based off of the final feasibility study. Overall, the project cost is estimated to be $32,583,000. Of that cost, Fargo will be, is committed to paying for $4,575,000. Of the remaining estimated, about $28 million, we have secured just over $18 million of grant money to be put towards the project, leaving a remainder of $9,823,000. That would be our local cost share. And based off of our current assessment policy shown in the 2024 CIP, we would be assessing 70% of these costs, more on a regional basis for this project. And that will leave the City of West Fargo's cost of $2,950,000 roughly that we would be paying via capital improvement sales tax. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Have you developed the map yet on where the assessments will be spread over?
Yep, that was previously approved when we created the improvement district.
I'm well aware of that. I just wanted you to state it to the public that that is online on this project and that can be viewed. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson?
I move will be approved.
Commissioner Zundal moves to approve Improvement District 2265, Ninth Street and Seventh Avenue Northeast Reconstruction. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve, to accept the Improvement District 2265, Ninth Street and Seventh Avenue Northeast Reconstruction to approve both an engineer's report and plans and specifications and direct an ad for bids and approve a resolution of necessity. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is a project number 2284, the 2026 HSIP Intersections Turn Lane Realignments. Again, we call on Dan Hanson, Senior Director of Community Development for this presentation. It's to direct and approve an engineer's report, direct and approve plans and specifications, and to direct an advertisement for bids by the North Dakota DOT. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President, Commissioners. This, again, is another project that has been in front of you in the past. Basically, next summer, the intent is that we're going to reconstruct three intersections to align left turning lanes, providing better visibility to the traveling public, and that also enables us to use a flashing yellow left turn arrow at those intersections to improve the traffic level, service of traffic for those intersections. The intersections are listed and shown in the packet. And again, we've talked about this in the past as well, but we were able to secure an HSIP grant that will cover 90% of the construction costs of the project, and it's expected to be bid out, again, by the DOT in January of '26 and constructed in the summer of 2026. And with that, I would entertain questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Commissioner Jorgensen?
I'd just like to thank you for all your hard work securing all these grants. It goes a long way for the taxpayers.
We need them.
Absolutely.
Will be approved.
Mr. Olson moves to approve project number 2284 for 2026 handicap intersections and turning lane realignments, direct and approve the engineer's report, direct and approve plans and specifications, and direct an advertisement for bids. Is there any further discussion?
I'll second it.
Oh, Commissioner Anderson, seconds. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine is a second reading to create and enact an ordinance of Chapter 2-06. We call on Katie Schmidt, City Attorney for the City of West Fargo. And the purpose of this discussion is to approve an ordinance 2.06.
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. Like you said, this is the second reading for ordinance number 1257, and it regards routine street maintenance. There have been no substantive changes since we had the first reading, so I would ask that you approve the second reading and adopt the ordinance. I am available for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Schmidt? Anyone?
Will be approved, second reading.
We have a motion to approve the second reading to create and enact an ordinance Chapter 2-06. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 10 is a closed executive session pursuant to North Dakota Sentry Code 44-04-19 and 4404-19.2 for an attorney consultation regarding the matter of associated general contractors of North Dakota and the American Concrete Payment Association, North Dakota Chapter Inc. versus the City of West Fargo, case number 09-2025-CV-02310. At this time, we will gavel out. We are adjourned from the regular agenda and we will be in a closed executive session. We will be returning. We are adjourned.
We reconvene the Monday, September 8th, West Fargo City Commission meeting. We are now on item number 11. Item number 11 is the City Administrator's Report. Mr. Scott.
Well, thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. Just a few updates for you. First, our 2024 audit. I'm told that Aid Bailey is finishing up their draft this week. They will no doubt be here on September 22nd to present their reports. Once we get the draft, I can share that with you ahead of the meeting so that you have time to see what their findings are. Next, our Finance Director Willie has been hard at work preparing an RFP for a new ERP system. It's our new finance software. We are hopeful that we can bring a draft forward either at the September 22nd meeting or the October 6th meeting to get authorization to advertise that request for proposals. That will certainly be a large endeavor, but we're excited to get going on that. It is long overdue to upgrade our finance systems. Any questions on those first two? Okay, finally, just a reminder that we do have a special meeting scheduled for next week on Monday. If you recall, this is the month where we're going to meet three times in a row. So, September 15th is a special meeting regarding special assessment districts that the Special Assessment Commission recently approved and moved forwarded on to the City Commission. So, that evening, you will hear any appeals from those that are in the district and review those assessments, either finally approve them or schedule another meeting to take action further. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scott, Commissioners? I don't see any. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
All correspondence has been distributed and placed in your mailboxes, unless any of you have an individual correspondence. I received one today from FEMA on certified mail regarding approval of our basement. Dan, would you step to the microphone? It goes on and on for a long time, and I gave it to Mr. Scott this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis. This is something I was going to bring up under the non-agenda items, is that we did receive word from FEMA that they have accepted our basement exception, allowing us to construct basements in the floodplain following our basic design guides and things like that. The other thing that I was going to mention is that we had two consultants that helped us with this, and they were instrumental in getting this approved. It's very important to us. We have always been able to do these basements and to be able to continue it on. There are a lot of communities that are in the FEMA program and very few have this basement exception, and we were very happy to get it. Moore Engineering is one of those consultants, and KLJ Engineering was the other consultant that helped us get to the finish line with this. So hats off to them for the assistance that they gave the city. It was instrumental in getting this approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do any of you have any non-agenda items? Commissioner Olson?
Our, the project that Mr. Hanson brought up before about the realignment of the intersections prompted me to think about Veterans Boulevard between Interstate and 32nd Avenue, where the northbound lanes have right turn lanes and the southbound lanes do not. And even traveling on it this afternoon at 3:00, there were two lanes of traffic just backed up for blocks and blocks. So is there anything on our radar to construct right turn lanes at any time soon? I don't know if it's on our CIP coming up. I don't have a copy of it, but it just, I travel that road a lot more than I did before, and it's just one of those things that causes traffic congestion.
I could say that's something that we can look into, but it is not currently on the CIP.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other non-agenda items you'd like to bring forward? Does any department have anything that you'd like to bring forward at this time? Mr. Anderson?